Welcome to Candidate Conversations for the March 5 Rio Rancho Municipal Elections. For this series, the Rio Rancho Observer has invited all city council candidates in for an interview to discuss why they're running and thoughts on city issues. Additionally, we have invited representatives from the city in to discuss three bond issues that are on the ballot. Today, we have Jim Owen, incumbent candidate for City Council District 1. Can you take a few moments to introduce yourself, your background, and why you're running for your seat again?
Okay, that's a difficult answer because I was one of the first people who came out here with Intel Corporation when we built Fab 7. And so that's how I got to New Mexico. So that was 1982, okay? Basically, the beginning of the city, okay? The city is relatively young as a city, but I was involved as site manager at Intel. So responsible for getting various things established. When we came to New Mexico, of course, we were invited by the state of New Mexico. We were given a special relationship with Sandoval County. And a lot of people don't realize that Intel Corporation is not in Rio Rancho. It's actually an island of Sandoval County inside Rio Rancho. Now, that's kind of a unique role. Most people are unaware of it, okay? But it does cause a little bit of misunderstanding about the impact that Intel has. I mean, they're a great partner. We've been involved with them since the very beginning, but at the same time, people have the impression that somehow or other it's a major tax benefit for Rio Rancho, which is very far from the truth, okay? It is basically a fundamental relationship with Sandoval County, and we get a portion of that, obviously, because of the relationship we have. It's what we call a basic employer, Intel. So everybody that gets hired at Intel, for instance, these 700 new jobs that are going to be coming with a expenditure of $3.5 billion to redo Fab 9 into a different project. Every one of those jobs generates, they're what we call a basic employer, and they generate a service employer, three of them, okay? So when you say 700 people, and you then multiply that by three, the relationship with the city of Rio Rancho and with Sandoval County is one that says, basically, hey, we're here to stay, and we're making a big impact, okay? I was still the site manager at Intel when we began the, well, basically, the whole issue of getting a school district. You have to remember that Intel is almost as old as the city, okay? The school district is almost as old as the city. Everything started from scratch. And I happened to be blessed with the opportunity to be involved in it on both sides of it, in the sense of the actual impact that Intel has had. And in addition to that, after I retired from there, I took my own business, Owen Graphics, which is still in operation today. And in addition to that, I was the mayor for four years, okay? In the period of time when, well, actually, Rio Rancho was considered the fastest-growing city in the United States, not just in New Mexico. And so it was kind of, I used the illustration, it's like riding on the back of a tiger, okay? You had to keep yourself very alert, otherwise you fall off and it'll eat your lunch, okay? But it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed everything. I had to do with that because it was a challenge, which I was familiar with. And I did have a lot of relationships with the state and county, which helped us become a more thriving city.
Okay. And so now you've decided to step back up onto the council, and you've been serving there how long?
Eight years.
Eight years?
Okay, so this will be my third term, okay? And one term as mayor, okay? So as far as, I'm kind of the resident historian on the council, but I'm not done yet, okay? We have a lot of things that we want to get finished up, not just for District 1, but for the entire city. Now, what you have now is about 110,000 people. When we were back in the very beginning, we were at 30,000, thereabouts. So it's been a dramatic increase in numbers. With that, we've established one of the finest police forces in the state. We have a first-rate fire and EMTs. We're blessed in the sense that we have people who believe in the first responders, okay? We don't have people throwing bricks at our cops or trying to figure out how to get around safety features that we've established. So it's very, very positive, okay? And the city, for the most part, considering the fact that we virtually had to rebuild everything from the very beginning, if you think about what you bring to the table is, you know, because I was basically a long-range planner for Intel, it also helped me be a long-range planner for Rio Rancho. And so there's much to be done. We've got 110,000 square miles. Okay, the actual geographic size of Rio Rancho is equivalent of Albuquerque.
I did not know that. And you kind of touched on the public safety, and one of the reasons people do move into Rio Rancho is due to its lower crime rate. And even so, the city still faces issues with crime, including theft, drugs, and even occasionally, there's some murder. How should or how does the city work to eradicate those issues?
Well, that's an interesting word, eradicate, okay? This, you know, what we have is human nature we have to deal with. And what we do is we want to be sure that our programs are designed to make a positive outcome, okay? So we don't provide for anything other than the first-rate safety of our individuals that live here. They want to be able to walk around at night without worrying about if they're going to get mugged or they're going to have some other difficulty. So the, basically, the attitude of the community as a whole is that everybody's looking after everybody else, okay? And that's really remarkable when you think about the size of the city and how fast we grew, okay? And as far as being safe, it's, you know, we have programs such as Coffee with a Cop, and so individuals who are interested in finding out what's happening on their beat or in their neighborhood or whatever, they can go to one of those and have a one-on-one relationship with them. We have involvement with a lot of the programs with children. We have them visiting the schools. So we're trying to make it, this is our community, not, it's not the people who own a home here's community, it's all of us together. So what we have is a relationship, a positive relationship with every organization. The first responders are critical to keeping the crime down. You are not going to eradicate it. What you have to do is be prepared for it. I've always thought of planning as playing a good tennis game. You don't play it flat-footed, okay? You're always on guard, you're always watching, you're always paying attention, and as a result, you're ready to respond to something that can come out of nowhere. And that's the same kind of thing that can happen with crime or anywhere else, you know? Right now, Albuquerque's struggling with several of those issues. They don't seem to be plaguing us as much yet, but some of that has to do with just our remote nature and the fact that we have some programs and something for people to do, okay? So if I was going to pick a city, we've already been picked by national organizations as one of the finest cities to live in. So we're very proud, in a sense, that they are able to look to us and it's not just fluff. Now, you've got to remember the history, okay? Rio Rancho, when it was not a city, okay? It was sold as a result of people back east, you know, showing people water skiing on the Rio Grande. Said, buy a half an acre, ride horses up and down the valley, you know? And so people back east bought the half-acre lot, and they moved out here, to the surprise of everybody, including the people who were selling the lots. So then, you have to go ahead and make it happen. Our first library was a trunk in the back of a car, all right? Now we have some of the finest libraries, and that's a result of planning volunteerism was a big part of that, people committing their time and energy to make it happen. And I'm not sure I've answered your question, I've kind of drifted a little bit.
Well, what type of business would you like to see moving into Rio Rancho, and how would the city get them here?
Okay, well, we can't march them in here at gunpoint.
No, of course not.
What we want to do is, we want to be able to facilitate, okay, growth, okay? And the way you do that is you have a business-friendly relationship with the development community, so that we're not, no, we're not going to make enough ordinances to put them out of business, okay? So our interest is for them to be successful. When you say, how do I get a different kind of a business? Well, everybody says, well, why don't we get a Trader Joe's up here? Well, the reason we don't have a Trader Joe's up here is because Trader Joe's doesn't want to come up here, okay? And why is that? Okay, well, it's very simple. Business, retail business, works off of headcount. So I have a friend of ours that has several restaurants in town, and his guiding rule is I don't build a new restaurant unless I have 20,000 people within a five-mile radius, okay? Well, if you look at our land distribution for Rio Rancho, getting 20,000 people is not that simple, okay? So we just put in our most recent Rio Rancho McDonald's on Northern Boulevard, and that's because that threshold was crossed, okay? But if it hadn't crossed, there wouldn't be one there, okay? Why would a grocery store want to put a grocery store out in the middle of nowhere, okay? Because then that, they're going to come, because we're here now, we got a grocery store, so now there are going to be more people coming in. That may be true to some limited amount, but not very realistic. So you want to make it reasonable, you don't want to tax them out of business, you want to encourage them, make it fast, because fast is important. There was a time when we used to tell people that would come here, that if you can commit to putting in your business here, we will get you into operation within 90 days. So speed is money, okay? And we're not stupid enough to think that it's anything else, okay? So you can't paint something pretty and make it work. It has to be functional first. And so it's important to use your logic and your abilities, and we have the finest guys working for the state, for the city, actually, are in, you know, in our development department, planning and zoning. All of that is built around the idea of customer service, okay? They're not there, we're not in the city to make their life miserable, okay? So if I make it impossible for them to get their job done because of delays and rules and regulations, it says, well, we'll get to that next month or the next month. Well, pretty soon, you're just not going to have anybody doing it. So we try to move it as fast as we can, and to encourage the ones that we want, we let everybody know what we want, okay? So the idea of having basic employers are very important. So those are the people like Intel, who bring in somebody where the money comes from outside the area, okay? A service employer, the dollars and cents that they make come from within the city or within the state or the county. But you bring somebody in like Intel, for instance, their payroll and their operational situation comes from outside. And so that's new money to New Mexico, and it makes it, they actually make a sound, like a vacuum sound, of other companies that want to do business with somebody like that. Up until they came out in the first, in '82 for Intel, you couldn't find somebody that could do the things that they do today. So it used to be considered the Silicon Hill, okay? But at the same time, we've also, the engineering firms that support them, I mean, it's a dynamic situation. It is not that we don't want certain businesses, we do. But if it's not a good business, we are not going to basically let them know that they're, they have a good plan, but we're not interested, okay? And there are businesses like that. So we're not going to help them, but if anybody will help us, we will help them.
Okay. And what about working to attract more diverse businesses into the community? You know, you kind of hear that, the complaints that all the new businesses opening kind of tend to be in the same type of business and...
Okay, well, again, it goes back to the people who are interested, okay? You can let everybody know that you're open for business, you can show how reasonable and accessible we are, and you can say, hey, you know, when you get through with the education system that we have, which is the finest in the state, you're going to have some people ready out, right out of high school and out of C&amp;M and out of U&amp;M, which are all located in Rio Rancho, you're going to have the workforce you need to make it happen. And if you're a bigger company that brings those kinds of things to bear, what would you call it? The serendipity, okay, is that they bring other things with them. People say, okay, I would like to have, let's say, a furniture store. Well, we wanted to have a furniture store since day one. Well, we're now going to get one. Well, why is that? Because somebody was interested, okay? So, you know, and it's hard for people to understand that you just can't say to somebody, hey, why don't you come out, we're going to treat you good, because everybody's telling them that, okay? And one of the things that you have to understand is that a city like Rio Rancho, which is a edge city, okay, much like Fort Worth and Dallas, and I use that comparison a lot, there'll be a day, someday, not long past or past my time of life, that Rio Rancho may very well be bigger than Albuquerque, okay? Just because of the land accessible. There's nothing accessible to the east, there's nothing accessible to the south or to, in other words, the only way you can go is west. So all the way out to the Rio Perco, you've got open land and open possibilities, okay? So it's going to come, and what you want to do is then manage it the best way you can, make sure you have the qualified people in place, and don't ever step back and do something expediently just to have it done, okay? And so that's why we have a planning and zoning group that takes good care of making sure that they have the ability to pull off what they're trying to do. Nothing like an empty building.
Right. What are your thoughts on the proposed LNG facility in Rio Rancho, and how do you think it will impact the city and its residents?
Okay. When people say that, they're thinking of Rio Rancho up the hill, okay? As soon as you do that, you don't realize what you're talking about is, in a sense, where they're looking at is way south and way west, okay? And what they're dealing with is the shortage that we have sometimes when weather is such that they have a stretch on their facilities. And so I'm not against it, okay? I'm glad that it's coming, and it's in an area where there aren't any people, okay? You know, if you look at the Black Ranch, basically, we annexed that area many years ago, back when I was the mayor, and we did that on purpose, and that was to be able to have access to large tracts of land that weren't encumbered with things like zoning issues or that type of thing, so that we could do, like the solar farm, it's going to be out there as well, okay? So all these gigantic operations didn't have any place to go. So I think this one, as long as they follow the safety procedures, we can look at it as a benefit to the country, to the nation, and to our state and to my city, okay?
This year, the city and the county both made it a legislative priority for a little bit more restriction on open records laws. However, some of the residents and us at the Observer have called for more transparency in the past. Where do you stand on that?
Well, as long as it's not frivolous. I mean, they should be able, you know, there are people who make it a lifestyle out of calling for transparency, just to challenge the whole situation, okay? What we have is a limited staff. We can't instantaneously just, you know, copy what would be reams and reams of paper for somebody to have a fishing expedition to find something that may or may not exist. So we want to have requests that are reasonable and are asking for information that is critical then to whatever their discovery is, okay? So it doesn't mean we won't build it, it just means that we will not be able to always do it as fast as they want it done.
Okay. And then, obviously, being the incumbent candidate, you were around when the call came to remove certain LGBTQIA-themed materials from the public libraries. Do you feel that was handled in the appropriate manner? Or retrospectively, is there something you would have done differently or responded differently?
I would have not done anything differently. What we did is, we did the things we always do, which is, we're going to make sure that the parent is involved, okay? I'm not going to put blindfolds on my librarians, okay? That's, you know, you're inviting problems, okay? And what they're saying is, the librarian, what we did was gave them the ability to be able to say, okay, this is inappropriate for you and your age group, okay? If you have a parent who wants to come in and help you with this, we will be happy to work with you, and so forth. So what we put on it was not, was not something that says blanket across the board, these things are going to be banned, but they are going to be dealt with as an adult, okay? And the parents are given responsibility. We don't want some six-year-old kid trying to figure out how he fits into life, okay? That's a parental responsibility, and we're very family-oriented, okay? So we're not going to play that game.
Okay. And then roads have been a continuing issue in Rio Rancho. Do you think the city is currently taking the right approach to scheduling repairs and replacements, and what, if any, changes do you think need to be made in that process?
Well, you need to give us $60 million, how's that, okay?
To do everything.
You know, if you want us to fix it, okay? One of the things you promise people, okay, is we're going to do this, whatever this is, and we're going to do it without raising your taxes. So you have the opportunity. You can, you can be California, who has taxed itself out of organizations and everything else because they've decided that it's more important to do a particular thing, whatever it is, and they need to raise taxes to do it. And so we don't raise taxes. What we do is, we basically say, we'll keep the tax rate the same, and the only thing that will change for you is if your house value changes. In other words, if your house is worth $100,000 and basically it increases in value to 150, your tax will increase, okay? Not because the tax rate increased, but because your value of your place increased. So you already get a benefit of having now a more expensive $150,000 house instead of 100, but at the same time, you are in a situation where you don't want to over-extract. Government does not make money, okay? The only thing it does is it spends it, hopefully wisely, on things that are important. There's only three things that are really important in a community. First responders, we've already talked about. If you don't have a safe place, you don't have a community, okay? The second thing is that you have to have a school system, and you don't want one that's struggling for survival, you want one that has a record of achievement. We have a 30-year-old school district that has the same superintendent for 30 years. She is so good at what she does that they actually named the second high school after her, okay? And she's still working, all right? So from that end, you want a child in a school district that provides them the opportunity to excel, okay? And if your child is one like one of mine, who is not an academic, but basically that wants to be woodworkers, let's say, then you can provide an avenue for that to happen through C&amp;M and U&amp;M and the relationships that they have with the Rio Rancho School District. And I was there at the very beginning of that, and I asked a question to the new school district leadership, and I said, who's your customer? And everybody said, well, it's the kids or it's the parents. Well, no, it's not. I said, as a representative of Intel at that time, I said, no, I'm your customer, okay? I want you to turn out somebody I don't have to retrain, because you didn't do the job by teaching them excellent skills, math, you know, and literature, a well-rounded student, and I need you to do that. And so they put together a program that went from K, okay, kindergarten, through up to 12, and with co-relationships with C&amp;M and U&amp;M, so people could actually take some college classes while they're in fact in high school, okay? So that makes for a dynamic outfit, and the way other companies have helped with that kind of thing, in the case of Rio Rancho, the first element, the first high school, we didn't have one, okay? So all of our kids went to Sebelo, which was in Albuquerque. And so what we wound up doing is saying, okay, we need one. And so they went back and they talked to Rio Rancho's visitor, okay, which is Intel, and they gave them $30 million to build a high school and build it for them, and sold it back to them for a dollar, okay? Now, those are dynamic things that make a city really proud of itself, for good reason. And so if we're going to increase that pride, that civic pride, we have to teach civic pride, and we have to expect it.
Pedestrian safety has been brought to the forefront of concerns for some residents in recent months due to some tragic accidents in the city, and even in Albuquerque as well. What steps can be taken by the city to improve that?
Well, about the only resource we have, okay, is coming up with some additional monies for crosswalks. Most of the damage that's been happening in our area, one of the most recent, which is tragic, the person was in a crosswalk, the person was wearing, you know, reflective gear, okay? So all the things that could have been done in terms of, you know, making it less unsafe, all it takes, people don't understand, all it takes for an individual to get hit by a car is seconds, okay? It isn't minutes, it's not hours, it's when somebody steps into a hazard zone without looking both ways. Remember how we used to teach our kids, look both ways, all right? Well, we should be doing that with people who are 90 years old too, okay? We all have to, we have a responsibility as pedestrians as well as drivers, and we should all be looking out for each other. And we are going to make some mistakes. People are going to make judgment mistakes. And when somebody, I see 528s bumper to bumper with cars, and you see somebody saying, oh, I don't want to walk down to the light to get across, I'm just going to cut through, and I'll jump to the median, and then I'll go from the median over across. Well, they make it 90% of the time, but when they don't make it, it's not a good deal. So as far as what we can do, we basically have been trying to, with any of our additional roads that we've been putting in, we've been putting sidewalks in, we've been putting in the lighting as we go. Looking at the legacy lots and streets that we've had from day one, a lot of those don't have them. They don't have lights, they don't have, it's a very dark place, and some people like it that way. In fact, is when somebody wants to get a light up, you have to basically convince the neighbor that they don't want to have light in the backyard because they want the privacy that they enjoy, okay? So it's a, it's a mixed bag.
Okay. One of the candidates has stated that this is one of the most important elections Rio Rancho has ever had. Do you agree with that statement?
I couldn't believe how anybody could say that, okay? The reason we've got bond issues, those are the important ones that we're dealing with, and those have to pass for us to keep making the progress that we're making. But for somebody to say that it's the most important election since whenever, I'm just wondering where they've been visiting, okay? They certainly have, other places they could go to find something worse. I mean, let's think about it, okay? Oh, I know, we can go to San Francisco, or we can go to Portland, or we can, you know, see what I'm saying? Okay, so that's political nonsense, okay? You don't, you don't, like FDR used to say, you don't change horses in the middle of the stream, okay? So we have challenges, which we are meeting. We have, we're putting out a newsletter every quarter thereabouts with highlights of all the activities that are going on. They have to be basically to hold that position, what, how can I say this pleasantly? Okay, let's sort of say they're less than honest.
And what do you feel are the biggest challenges currently facing the city?
Okay, that's, it's still going to be roadways for the most part, and the reason for it is because we're starting from way out of line. I mean, we just finished Rainbow Boulevard, which is just a wonderful road, and, you know, my neighbor who just moved in not too long ago from Oklahoma, and she was driving down Rainbow Boulevard, and she talked to me, and she said, you know, Jim, those cracks in the road, she said... She said, are those expansion joints? And that was kind of comical. Okay, but I'd said, no, that's just cracking, it's because it was not made with the best materials at the time it was done. So that was a legacy road, okay, which we knew we had to replace. We didn't have the money to do it. So we were able to work out negotiations with the county, the state, federal government, and the city, and we were able to get enough money together, that we didn't have to replace the utilities under the ground. So we were able to get that entire thing done as a joint effort, and got, those are people that are driving up and down that road every day, they feel blessed. Now, if you live in an area where you have a crack in your road, and you got a traffic load of about three or four households, you know, it's hard to justify going in and putting more burden on the rest of the community, because you're unhappy with what is a drivable road, but not necessarily a comfortable road. I'd like you to come out and see a crack in front of my house.
And then, you know, from some of the statements you made, I think I know the answer to this question, but do you think the city is moving in the right direction, and why do you say that?
Well, if you have any rear sight at all, 2020 hindsight, you can see where we came from, and for where we are in the short period of time that we're talking about, we're talking about 30 years, and we've gone from nothing to where we are. And for somebody to say, well, you know, I just don't think we're making enough progress, and, again, where have you been? Okay, you must have been hanging out at the local, maybe brewery or whatever, and discussing things because it's not fast enough for you. Okay, well, how fast is fast enough? It has got limitations. Reality is that you can't put yourself into debt. Okay, you have to be in a position, for instance, because we have legacy problems such as sewers and water butt lines and what have you, you have to have extra money to be able to fix those when they blow up. Okay, and they do that every once in a while, and when they do, you have a reserve, and we have a reserve, which is required by law, by interstate law, and we exceed that by twice. And so we always have enough to be able to go ahead and take care of that. Now, we also have something we just established, which is a reserve fund that has, that will be basically an account that will be fed the additional leftover funds into a permanent fund that will be generating interest, and that interest then will be used to fix some of the problems with the roads and what have you. But if you want to jump in there and take that, what was basically $10 million, okay, and take it and use it real quick, well, the cost of building the road from 528 to Sarah, okay, was $16 million. That was one road. Okay, so, you know, whoever would like to make a splash, you can, but it's a really big pond. Okay, so we have to be critical of our own for, you know, what we're trying to get accomplished. And what we want to do is be sure that we are honest, and that we, you know, we just had our audit on this for 2023, and we had no negatives. Okay, and that's, I think it was about, what, four years in a row that we have not had a problem with our audits. So when you find out where the money goes and how you're tracking it, it'll tell you just how transparent this city is. Okay, so people that are basically saying that somehow we just must have forgot something, I'm sorry for that, I'm sorry for them, because they haven't asked the questions, it's kind of like, oh my God, we're going to run out of water. Well, we are a city, okay, that doesn't have water rights to the Rio Grande, okay, because we came in too late, okay, we're the city. So we have to get groundwater only. Well, the way we solved that problem, the counselor, let me think, anyway, he gave me a helping hand with this, Bency, and what we wound up doing is doing water reinjection. So what we do with our wastewater now is we treat it to a tertiary level, where it means that you can actually drink it, and we reinject it into the water table as a banking of that water, so that we can basically support the growth that we have as a city. So we're looking in the forward view, not the rear view. Rear view is looking back and see where you come from. Forward view says, what am I going to do next? And I could keep on going.
Well, that's all the questions I had. Is there anything else you want to touch on that we haven't gotten to yet?
One of the things that people also don't understand is that the antique plating problem that we have, that was a legacy issue from the beginning of what was Rio Rancho Estates. Okay, and that is those half-acre lots that are out there, they're overgrown with brush and whatever, those are owned by people all over the world, and we don't know who all of them are, some of them, you know, grandma gave them a gift of a piece of land in the middle of a desert, and we have to be able to consolidate those lands into a manageable piece. Cabazon is one of the examples of that, River's Edge is another one, where we were able to do that. But there are new laws that got put in place that put that on hold, and we need to get that fixed, because we have to be able to utilize that square miles, you know, 111 square miles, and be able to let people know that we do have a good plan for the future, and we do have a plan. Every year, we revisit, we have a strategic plan every five years, but we look at it every year, and we adjust what we're doing and checking it, and making sure that not only do we have input from the council, but you also have staff members that have vested interest in this, a good outcome for them, because their future is tied to this just as much as it is for you.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming in and talking with us about some of the issues facing the city, and I appreciate your time and...
Well, I just want to encourage everybody to remember that early voting starts tomorrow. Okay?
Well, I'm not sure when this will be released, so...
Well, that would be the 5th.
February 5th.
Actually, it's the 6th.
Okay.
February 6th is early voting. Okay, and that'll be at the Senior Center on Broadmoor. Okay, so, yes, it's coming very, very fast.
Yeah.
Okay, so I do appreciate the opportunity to share some of this. It's difficult, because I don't, I've been involved in it from the get-go. Okay, so where do you stop? Okay, you know, so it's been years and years of accomplishment, and I always make a statement which is true, never mistake activity for accomplishment. Okay, you can look busy as all get out, but if you're not getting something really done, then you're just fooling yourself. Okay?
All right, well, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, well, thank you for inviting me.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good one.
This is Jim Owen. I just want to thank you for paying attention to the new election that's coming up, it's really important. We have some serious business to take care of, and we want to keep the momentum going. I've been involved with the city and the city council for eight years, and intend to go ahead and finish what we got started. Really excited about some of the things that have happened with West Side Boulevard and the new elementary school for Joe Harris, and basically the actual opportunity to see a new high school coming in near Rainbow Boulevard, not too far distant future, and I want to be a part of that. Now, I've been working with this group of people, they are a great council and great staff, you're very fortunate to have the ones that we have already, I'd like to see that be maintained. So I'm running primarily because I'm not done, my other incumbents are not done, we are actually moving forward at, I think, a record pace, and at the same time, we're doing it reasonably and transparently. So I would like to let you know that I do have the qualifications, if you have any questions about that, look up my Facebook account, and you can see my credentials, and you'll find out that I'm the most qualified person that could be running for District One. I do appreciate your interest. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, area code 505-379-9476.
Rio Rancho Municipal Elections are slated for 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM March 5 at a variety of locations in Rio Rancho. Residents can vote at any polling location, no matter their address. Voting centers will be at Broadmoor Senior Center Clerk's Annex, Plaza at Unser Marketplace, Loma Colorado Library, Rio Rancho MVD on Sabana Grande Avenue, The Hub at Enchanted Hills, Rio West Business Center, Cabazon Community Center, Rio Rancho Middle School, Cielo Azul Elementary School, Puesta del Sol Elementary School, Lincoln Middle School, and Colinas del Norte Elementary School. Early voting kicks off February 6 at Broadmoor Senior Center Clerk's Annex, with hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday through March 2. Saturday voting kicks off February 17 with hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Additional locations will open for early voting February 17 at Plaza at Unser Marketplace, Loma Colorado Library, Rio Rancho MVD on Sabana Grande Avenue, The Hub at Enchanted Hills, and Rio West Business Center. Absentee voting begins February 6. Voters may cast an absentee ballot by submitting an application to the city clerk's office no later than February 20. Ballots must be returned to the city clerk's office no later than 7:00 PM on Election Day, March 5.